Okay, we're getting ready to start. Okay, good morning. I'll call the order, the January 4th, 2021 Regular Meeting of Haywood County Board of Commissioners. This is our first meeting of the year. Our first order of business is our Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, I'm going to ask our Chaplain, Pastor Josh Frazier, to come forward for invocations. So if everyone please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, to the republic which has its hands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. God in heaven, we thank you for another day, Lord, to be able to do your business, God, here for this, this county. We pray that you would just lead us and guide us in all that we do. We thank you for the freedoms that we have, Lord. We thank you for all the many blessings that we have, and we thank you for giving us the ability to be able to think through these things. I pray that you, again, you would give guidance and wisdom today. I pray that you would allow us to do what is best, not only for ourselves, but for the people that are all around us. God, I thank you for, for men that are willing to do your work and women to be able to do your work, and I pray that you would just continue to bless us here in Haywood County. We pray all this in your name. Amen.
Okay, thank you, Pastor Josh. Okay, just a couple of notes. Tommy Long could not be here this morning. He is joining us by telephone, I believe. I guess that's the way to put it. So Tommy will be there. He's, I guess it's okay to say that Tommy's quarantined this morning, so. And that's why I was able to come down to, to this spot. And then also, this is our first meeting for Jennifer Best, so our first full meeting, so welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. Good morning.
Okay. Okay. And then our first, next order of business is public hearings, and we have none. And then, and then after that is, our next order of business is our public comment session. And does, do we have anyone signed up, Tracy? Okay. Would anyone like to address the board this morning? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment section. Okay, we'll move on to constituent concerns, and we have Garen here this morning. I thought he could just give us a brief COVID update. Is that okay? And welcome, Garen. I appreciate you coming out and letting us know kind of what's going on. We, I know we have a Commissioner now that's not here this morning, and then we have, I'm hearing stories of a lot of folks that are knowing people and that have had it, and a lot of families have had it, so. Give us an update, if you will.
Well, the, the biggest thing I wanted to talk to you about this morning is the rollout of the vaccine and where we're at with that. We did start giving out vaccine last week. We have received a thousand doses with our first shipment. We've gotten all the public health staff that volunteered to sign up, and we've gotten some private clinics through. This week, we're working Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday to get more of what is considered the 1A group. These are the doctor's offices, dentist offices, funeral homes, things of that nature. We are looking at probably moving through this entire group with the vaccine we have, so we'll start on the next phase of the vaccine, which now includes the, pretty much the 75 and older crowd. That has changed as of last Wednesday. It was 75 and older with two chronic comorbidities. Now it's just plain 75 and older. So what our goal is, is we're going to come up, we've come up with a program with some help from our emergency management staff that mirrors the COVID vaccine monitoring system. It's a short questionnaire. We collect some simple data such as name, date of birth, phone number, email if they've got it. They complete the, what is just a couple of questions, and it gives us a list we build upon. This is a pre-registration that we're doing. So we're going to train staff this week, and hopefully by maybe Wednesday, be able to roll out a hotline that those that are over 75 can call in to get this pre-registration done. We will also be providing this form, this Google Doc on the county's website for those who want to just go in and try to get in this pre-registration themselves. This is for us to build this list with, and then we will start scheduling appointments as soon as we're ready to move into that group, which we anticipate being possibly sometime, maybe even by the end of next week. We also will be including, as we work through that group, our fire and law enforcement, our EMT, paramedics that are left over. So that'll be the concentration that we'll be working on for the next foreseeable future, because that'll be quite a large group with that 75 and older. Once we've completed the largest part of that group, then we look at the age range from 65 to 75 to get the vaccine next. Do you have any questions about where we're at with that?
Did you come up with this prioritization?
Yes, we've, we've built that in-house.
I thought they had left it up to the counties to do that, and I, I just think this is, you've done a pretty good job with it.
The only, the only thing you'll see on there is where it says under Phase 1, and it says scheduled next, it says the adults 75 and older with two or more chronic illnesses. That is now just adults that are 75 and older. That's the only change. That came out from the state on Wednesday. And I have not got an update on when we expect to receive any, our next round of vaccine. Hopefully, we'll hear something maybe this week about when, when we could expect that and how much would be coming. We have met with a hospital. They have some vaccine left over, and we are trying to assist them as soon as they get the okay from their corporate office to move outside their four walls with giving that vaccine, so they may be able to hit some of the private practices, doctor's offices, to assist there.
So, Garen, so the county got X number of doses, and then the hospital got a separate allotment? Did anybody else in the county get an allotment of?
No, not at this time.
Just, just those two entities?
Exactly. We, we do know of other groups that have applied with the state to become providers for the next round of vaccine, so hopefully more groups will be able to receive it soon.
Is that, is that like the pharmacies?
There are, there have been some pharmacies and I think a few private practices, yes.
Okay, but they've not got it yet?
But they've asked for it. They've asked for it.
Okay, okay.
So CVS and Walgreens haven't received it. That means they haven't, they haven't been vaccinating the people in the nursing homes?
I, I take that back, because they have vaccinated some of the nursing homes, and we've reached out to most of those long-term care facilities. We thought we had a couple that we might have to assist with, but it appears that all of those nursing homes have registered, and CVS and Walgreens have gotten to a few of them, and then they have more scheduled throughout the rest of this month to vaccinate, yes.
No, that's exactly what I was going to ask you. I'd been contacted by a long-term care facility last week, and I just wanted you to explain that, and you just did. So that is separate from what we're doing, I think, is the main point, so.
It is separate. Like I say, we, we had a couple that we were concerned hadn't pre-registered with Walgreens and CVS, but we have found out that all of, all the ones, the largest ones have.
And then, if, if you've had COVID, do you still need to get a vaccine? What, what's the recommendation on that, or do they have one?
We would prefer you wait, if at all possible. I can tell you with some of the long-term care facilities, when Walgreens was vaccinating them, they had residents that had COVID but have now recovered. They're saying anywhere from up to 90 days out, they would recommend you wait on getting the vaccine, but you do not have to. So as long as you've recovered, you can still get the vaccine. But in theory, you have that immunity for up to 90 days.
Okay, that's built up. So the people that have gotten the first dose of the vaccine, they'll be having to get another shot in a few weeks, right?
In 30 days out.
30 days, okay.
When we, when we started this rollout last week, anyone that received the vaccine got a card with an appointment date for their next vac, their second dose, and they registered two through, where we can send out basically through CVMS and let them know before their, their date comes.
You had multiple clinics last week, two, I think?
We had two, yes.
Do, do you know how many you did, how many vaccines you gave?
It's around 70, and we're going to try this week. I think we have somewhere scheduled around 250 for this week. I know the largest day we have is this Friday. We're going to try to do 112 from all the dental offices. That'll be our busiest day.
Garen, I think it might be good for the public too to explain how long, it, it's not like you just walk by and you get a shot. There's a, there's a protocol, and, and it takes about, what, 15 minutes to give a shot or so?
It does. The, the largest part of that is we have to have you wait, and we monitor after the shot to see if you have any adverse reactions for 15 minutes. So far, from the shots we gave last week, really, the people I talked to had very little, some had sore arm. I talked to a couple that had headaches, but many of them said that they had nothing.
Garen, can, can you hear me?
Hi.
That's Tommy, I think.
Yeah, Tommy, go ahead.
I'm glad to see you covering this issue. I had several constituent concerns last week, and could you just recap that the state, it's the State Department of Health and Human Services that basically are the ones letting their purse strings down on giving these vaccines out to the counties? And also, could you touch on the shelf life of the vaccine that you have on hand, how many doses you have left, and also, I was contacted, there's a possibility it's going to be a drive-through clinic down at the fairgrounds. Could you touch on that briefly?
Well, with the last part, with the fairgrounds, we were looking at the possibility, the state has given us some guidance on Wednesday of when we can move into the next phase groups, some dates. And I think, let's see, on the 20th of the month, we can move into trying to look at, yes, on January 20th, which was our original date anyway, of trying to have a mass vaccination that involved law enforcement, fire, and the remaining EMS. We were trying to possibly do that as a practice run, as a drive-through at the fairgrounds at that time. The shelf life with the vaccine, I think, was part of the question. Our vaccine is frozen because it is Moderna, so we can keep it up to six months. We don't anticipate keeping it more than three weeks, but once we thaw it, we have so many hours in which we can use it within that day. Each, each vial basically contains enough for 10 shots within it, so we have to sort of plan accordingly as we move forward. We can set it out, each vial out at room temperature that day for about an hour, let it thaw out, as long as we know we can get rid of all those shots as we thaw each vial.
What was, what was the first part of your question, Tommy?
I was wanting to clarify, it's the State Department of Health and Human Services that's actually the gatekeeper on which counties get the vaccine and, and when? Is that correct?
Didn't make that out.
Something about a gatekeeper.
Oh, can you hear me now?
It's just not a good connection, Tommy. Joey?
I was wondering if...
Go, go ahead.
I was wondering if, just to clarify, it's the State Department of Health and Human Services that's actually responsible for letting out the vaccines to the counties?
That, it is the state public health services that are in charge of this. Yes, they, they are making the decisions on who gets vaccine, and then, once it goes out, it's up to each individual, whether it's the hospital, CVMS, another pharmacy, they're being put under control of that vaccine, and we have to track it. But it is a public health, the state's public health that is in charge with giving out the vaccine.
Have you seen the willingness for most people in these groups to get it, or, or, so what's the acceptance of the vaccine rate?
Well, when we originally started this, we were polling employees of different offices, trying to get numbers, and it was coming in around 50%, but since we've started ministering the vaccine, we get a lot of calls, a lot of calls from people who want this now. So we're seeing it ramp up, where it's becoming something that people are accepting and really are wanting to get it as quickly as possible. And with that, I have to tell everyone to be patient. We do have a limited number of vaccine. We do have a plan. We are rolling it out now. We're going to try to get to each group according to the state guidelines of how they administered us, and follow this guidance, and we are working through it. We've got this entire week scheduled. We have most of next week scheduled, so we are, we're working with our plan.
It's uncharted territory for everybody, isn't it?
It is, and the timing in which it came out around the holidays made it a little difficult, of course. Then you've got a lot of positive cases that are coming about, and it's staffing, it's other factors, but we're still trying to move forward with doing this as quickly as we can, and like I say, we, we just need the public to be patient. I, I know that a lot, there's a lot of anxious people out there right now with the surge in cases, and we will try to get this vaccine to everyone as quickly as we can. And as soon as we know we're getting another shipment, we'll be very transparent out there and let everyone know when we plan to give it out.
Garen, I got one more question for you. When you get the vaccine, are you, does it work right away? I mean, can you get COVID the next day?
You can. That's why you need to wear a mask. So with that first dose, they say within that period of the 30 days before the next dose that you can become 80% immune, and then after that second dose, it could be up to 95%. But that, for those first two weeks, you need to really be protecting yourself. You're still susceptible to COVID.
And we still don't know if you, if you get the vaccine, you're past that 30-day window, can you still carry, carry it to somebody else and give COVID to somebody else if you've had the vaccine, or do we know that?
Well, we don't truly know that. I mean...
Can you be a carrier, I guess, is what I'm trying to say?
If, if you were positive, you would be able to. Of course, this vaccine is all synthetic. It doesn't have COVID in it, so you're not going to test positive from getting the vaccine. If you were to contract COVID-19 and not build that immunity, you would just be like anyone else, that it would be contagious.
Go ahead, Brian.
I, I think on Wednesday or Thursday, we talked, we've sort of cut the hours back to our call center as, as, as we went through the process, but we started talking Thursday about the need to maybe restaff that so we can answer more calls, especially as we go through the different phases. I think people will want information from us about the plans, so Garen and a few of us are going to meet over the next couple of days to bring the call center back up. We've got some volunteers from the library and, and a few other departments that are going to help man the phones so we can get good information out.
Okay, good. And this vaccine, is it Moderna that you, that you have?
I'm sorry? Yes, it's Moderna. It is Moderna.
Moderna, okay.
The hospital has Pfizer, and so their, their shelf life is a little bit shorter. Of course, that is the ultra-low cold vaccine, and it has to be mixed, so.
Right, right, yeah, okay. Okay. Anybody else have any other questions from here?
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Garen, I just really appreciate y'all's efforts during this and targeting that 75-year-old and older age group, and looking at the data and making good decisions on, on how to administer that. So just appreciate all the hard work y'all are doing on that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tommy. Okay, so this is constituent concerns, and Brandon, did you have any that you?
No, just what we addressed here with COVID, I got with Mr. Morehead, and we addressed those and took care of them.
Okay, you got anything?
I did not have any.
Same thing as COVID.
Yeah, drives everything, okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I had one more, and I guess since I've been on the Commissioner Board, the one that's a hot-button issue is I got a, another call about broadband internet access, and so I told them we were working on it, and I just encouraged Brian, the county staff, to keep your ears open and see if we can obtain any grant monies to, to kind of help with these underserved areas of the county. So that's all I had.
Okay, thanks, Tommy. Okay, we'll move on to administrative agency reports and presentations, and we have our annual audit report from Gould Killian CPA Group. Gould Killian CPA Group Audit Manager Travis Kiever, and we don't have Julie here anymore, so Kristen's here also. So Travis, welcome this morning.
Thank you. Good morning. Hope y'all are doing good.
You're making your yearly pilgrimage, aren't you?
What's that?
Your yearly pilgrimage here?
Yeah, that's right. Got to fight that I-40 traffic this morning. I was a couple minutes late. Well, my name's Travis Kiever. I'm the Audit Manager with Gould Killian CPA Group. We've been doing your audit for several years now, and we always appreciate the opportunity to work with the county, especially with, with Julie, who of course is outgoing, and we worked with Christian for a while, and they're always a pleasure. So this year was no different. My presentation is going to be really brief. It's mostly going to cover the four audit reports that we issue that are included within your CAFR, and then I'll also touch on the Board Communication Letter that we issue, as well as a couple of key financial highlights. So we issue four audit reports in the county's CAFR. The first is, is on page one of the CAFR, and it covers the financial statements and disclosures. We issued an unmodified opinion, which means we believe the county's financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This is known as a clean opinion, and that, of course, is what everybody wants when you get an audit. So that's on the financial statements and disclosures. The second report we issue is a report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. That's in the back of the CAFR on page 148. This report's required by governmental auditing standards. It won't be found in a, in a business's financial statement. This one's specific to governments. So as part of your audit, we review internal controls over financial reporting, as well as the county's compliance with key laws and regulations to the extent that's necessary to perform our financial statement audit. We don't perform a full audit of internal controls. We focus on those that are most impactful to the numbers on the financial statements. We do this in a number of ways. We conduct interviews and walkthroughs with staff to review processes in place, as well as observing transactions as they occur. We review a sample of cash disbursements made by the county to ensure the proper authorization was given, the budgetary authority existed. We review a sample of employee payrolls to ensure that employees are being paid at the approved rate and for the number of hours entered on their timesheet and approved by their supervisor. And throughout all those processes, we didn't note any material weaknesses in internal control and no instances of non-compliance with laws and regulations. So that's, that's what that report says, and that's, that's kind of the highest mark we can give on that report. The last two, which are, are on pages 150 and 152, are on compliance and internal control over compliance with major federal and state grant programs. We perform what's called a single audit on some of the major grant programs the county has. This year, those major programs audited were Medicaid, which was audited for federal and state purposes, the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families was a federal program that was audited, and then we audited the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which is the, the money that came to the county through the CARES Act, and then the COVID-19 assistance from FEMA. Those were the federal programs. For state, in addition to Medicaid, we also audited the Foster Care Program, the Public School Building Capital Fund, which is the lottery money that the, that the county gets, and the Juvenile Crime Prevention Program. And through each of those, those single audits of grant programs, we noted no instances of non-compliance, no issues of, of incorrect eligibility determinations, or no internal control deficiencies over the compliance with any of those programs. So out of all four reports we issued, they were all clean opinions, no findings. That's, that's kind of the 30,000-foot summary of those. And a couple of financial highlights, the county ended FY20 with a general fund balance right at 40.8 million. That's an increase of about 2.8 million from FY19, and you can see on the chart the positive trend over the last couple of years. Fund balance available for appropriation, which is, of course, a statutory calculation that the state looks at, amounted to about 32 million, and that's right at 39% of annual general fund expenditures, which are around 82 million. The council's policy is to maintain available fund balance of 11% of expenditures with a target of 24 and a half, and the state minimum requirement's 8%. And again, you all are at 39%, so in pretty good shape there. And that graph that's on the screen now shows how you are in relation to other units in the state. The blue line is your population group. That's cities and towns that are, that are of similar population, and then the green line is, is just counties in the state. And so y'all are in the same ballpark as your, as your counterparts and trending slightly ahead, so that's, that's a good thing. Right there's a pie chart that just shows the breakdown of general fund revenues. Your pie chart looks like the pie chart of almost every other county in the state. Ad valorem taxes make up a little over half of the revenue that comes in the general fund, and then you've got local option sales taxes around 20%. Restricted intergovernmental, which is a fancy way to say grants, is right at 17%. And then other is a 12%. That would include things like interest income, insurance reimbursements, things like that. And expenditures, kind of the same thing. The, the three big ones for the county are education, public safety, and human services. Those are all roughly 25% each, and then, then other would make up the other 25%. That's things like parks and recreation, things like that. There's a summary of your property tax collections. Of course, from FY19 to '20, the property tax rate held steady. Collection rate dipped just a tiny bit, probably related to COVID, but it wasn't anything significant. We've been seeing that all over the place. Your, your decrease, if you even want to call it that, about three tenths and 1% was, was certainly less severe than we've seen in other places, so that's probably a good thing, too. We also issue a smaller document that, that may be in your packet. If it's not, it's been issued. It's a required auditor communication to the board. It communicates certain information about our responsibilities and the scope of our audit. It's, we're required to issue it under general auditing standards. A couple of the highlights in there, there were no new accounting policies that were adopted, and the application of current policies did not change. We noted no transactions entered into by the county for which there's a lack of authoritative guidance, and based on our audit, it appears that all significant transactions were recorded in the proper period. And then your financial statement, like all financial statements include a fair number of estimates. Some of the more sensitive estimates in your financials include depreciation methods and estimated useful lives of assets, allowances for uncollectible receivables, and actuarial estimates used to estimate liabilities arising from the various post-employment benefit plans that the county participates. benefit plans that the county participates in, such as the state retirement plan, the law enforcement officer special separation allowance, and the retiree healthcare benefit plan. And then the document also reiterates what I talked about earlier, related to the county's internal control. That's all I've got. So if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Anybody have any questions?
No questions, just comment. Good report. I mean, well, I shouldn't say I didn't have any question. I guess I do have one. On the collection, I know you said it was all over the place statewide. Do you have an average percentage that it is statewide?
I don't, because there's not enough states been able to issue the report for them to put that out. There were a lot of audits that were delayed. We got you guys done basically on a normal time schedule, because I think you guys were trying to go to the local government commission to issue debt. So there was kind of a little bit of a time sensitivity on your audit. But there's, I'd say, more than half the counties haven't got theirs done yet. But from what we are seeing, it's kind of up and down, and it depends on the county. Seems like the smaller counties are maybe a little bit harder hit. So, but yeah, you guys are, that's mostly flat, what we're seeing.
I mean, that's not much of a change at all. So I think with the year we've had, that's pretty good. The whole report's good. You know, the fund balance man where it's at. And just appreciate all the work that our staff's done to keep us where we're at. Done a good job.
Anybody else got anything to say? I do want to congratulate our staff. I know Julie's not here, but Kristen, if you'd let her know, we thank you for all y'all have done. And we always, it seems like our audits are all, ever since I've been a commissioner for almost, you know, 20 years, they've always been good. I mean, Kirk can probably say the same thing. We appreciate all the work of our staff. Any questions at all? Okay. Well, thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, our next item under agency reports would be our Veterans Services of the Carolinas update. And we have our Veterans Services of the Carolinas Managing Director Brandon Wilson and Health and Human Services Agency Director Ira Dev here this morning. And welcome, Brandon and Ira.
Yes, we have with us the Director of Veterans Services for the Carolinas, Brandon Wilson.
All right, let me get right here. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for having me here today. Just wanted to really give you an update on some of the activities going on in Haywood County outside of normal state and county means, in the nonprofit space, specifically for your veterans' population here in Haywood County. So I'm going to talk a little bit about 30,000-foot view of ABCCM, the Asheville-Bunkham Community Christian Ministry, and the regional effort that they have outside of just Bunkham County. Most people think ABCCM, they think just the Asheville-Bunkham area. And for a lot of the programs, they do. So if you have the, what's the clicker out there? What's in front of you there? ABCCM has been around for 51 years. They have six different ministries that operate in Asheville-Bunkham area. We operate four crisis ministries that are very similar to the Haywood Christian ministries. We have a free medical ministry also in downtown Asheville. We have a jail ministry that's really robust. And we have the Veterans Restoration Quarters, which is a 246-bed facility for male veterans. And you can see there, we've been really busy, particularly during COVID. We've opened up some additional emergency beds, and we've been doing some special quarantine stuff with the city of Asheville. The other regional effort is Transformation Village. That facility there is for women and children. We have currently held a 52-bed facility for women and children in downtown Asheville. That has been, as of two weeks ago, we opened up this facility. This is a $12 million facility that has went from 50 beds to 90 beds overnight. That is going to be a 300-bed facility in the next two years in Phase Two and Three. This is regional effort. So this isn't just for the Asheville-Bunkham area. We will take citizens from all across the region into this facility. It is a program, so it's not something that they just get a bed and a hot meal. We do those things during Code Purple and other facets and emergencies. But once you're in the program, you stay in the program until we get you self-sustainable. This is really important with Transformation Village, because we are going to have 16 mental health beds and 24 opioid beds in the future in Phase Two and Three. And we all know how important that is, not just for Bunkham County, but for the entire region. So we're really excited about this. We're excited for Haywood citizens to take advantage of this facility when we get it up to operations, okay? We'll move out along. Veterans Services of the Carolinas is the division that I operate. We operate that across the state of North Carolina. So we have this in 74 counties. We operate four major programs. And I'm going to talk about those programs. What's unique to Haywood County is all four of these programs are in Haywood County. The first is our Housing Services. We operate a $3 million grant from the Department of Veterans Affairs called SSVF. It stands for Supportive Services for Veterans and Their Families. This program, we use the Housing First model, where we work to get veterans housed first, and then work around that whole healthcare needs around that. What's unique about this program is we can jump in and pay rent if they're getting ready to be evicted. Or we can take chronically homeless veterans, house them, and then get them self-sustainable through nine, 10, 12 months' worth of case management and programming, which, once again, is important to ABCCM, is just those wraparound services that we work with. Our Employment Program is a $1.5 million grant we get from the U.S. Department of Labor. We, in the same vein of housing, we work to get chronically homeless veterans or at-risk veterans back into the workforce. And so I like to use the ABCs of employment. We work with these individuals to get them a job, work with training and education to get them a better job. And during that process, we try to find what they want to do and put them on a career field. Because we all understand, if you're happy going to work, you're going to go to work, and you're going to be successful. Another program that we have is called NC Serves. This program has been around in the state since 2015. It was originally funded by the Walmart Foundation and Syracuse University, but is now funded 100% by the Department of Health and Human Services. This is a coordinated effort. So basically, we're like the enhanced 2-on-1 for the veterans' community. So we take calls, walk-ins, referrals from other providers across 21 human service needs. That could be legal, it could be daycare, it could be food, it could be utilities, it could be one of our housing or employment programs. And we work with other community partners to successfully make that transition for them to get connected to that with a warm handoff. And then our last program is our HOPE program. And I really want to talk a little bit about, I'll talk about our HOPE program in a minute. Haywood County is one of six counties in the state that has this right now. So this is an intensive outreach program that only you share with Bunkham, Henderson, Cumberland County, Cardwrit, and Onslow. So this is in its second year of pilot, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that here in a minute. That's just a map of the operations, where we're at across the state. But I'm going to talk to you more about why this is important here in Haywood County. So according to the 2019 VA GDX report, there are around 5,485 veterans here in Haywood County. That's about 8.8% of the population. So when you think about that, when you're out and about, one in every eight people you encounter probably have served this nation, if you look about those averages. It's an economic impact in Haywood County of around $61,219,000. That is a lot of money being driven into Haywood County just because of those 5,485 veterans. I say all that, and the support that you have for your Veterans Service Office here, some of the work that we're doing with the Department of Health and Human Services here, in DSS, and nonprofits in the area, the better we can serve our veterans, the better we can make this a better home for them, the better they're going to feel supported. More veterans are going to come here, and that $61 million a year is going to go up. Now, I know this isn't $61 million that the county gets to put their hands on, but we just saw the report on collected taxes. Where do you think this money is being spent? It's paying their taxes. It's going back into the economy. A little bit more on that economic impact. This is veterans who receive disability compensation for their time in service. It includes their GI benefits. It includes them being able to go to the VA, including healthcare. So it's a lot of other things, facets, that go into that $61 million impact. The last two there that you see there showing on a report that, the VA reports on this, and we know this is inaccurate, and I'm going to show you why in a minute. The point in time count happens every January. It's going to happen this month. And it's one day out of the year where we go out into the streets and find out how many homeless people you have, and if you chat on your by-name count. Last year, they said that there was 130 homeless people in Haywood County, and four of those were homeless veterans. And we know that's inaccurate, because I'm going to tell you some statistics right now, what my team's been doing. What is unique to know is that 27% of all of the state's homeless veterans reside in Bunkham County. That's because of the VRQ and Transformation Villages, and we have a really good VA. So we have a lot of veterans that come from Virginia, Texas, South Carolina, that come to the region for that. It also bleeds into Haywood County, right? We all know that some of those struggling with homelessness become transient. So they cross those county lines and those borderlines as they go back and forth. So there's going to be some challenges. It's going to continue to materialize, particularly with coming out of this COVID. But there also is some opportunities for us to do a little bit better at what we're doing. So I talked about those four that were identified, that the government said we had here in the county. In our housing program that we operate now, and we have three case managers that operate in the county, we enrolled 25 veterans last year into our SSVF program. These are 25 homeless veterans. We successfully housed 20 of those, and they are still housed today. One of the main things that ABCCM does so well is, once we have somebody in the program, and we provide that case management for nine or 10 months, after they exit the program, we celebrate, we say yay, we did a great job. But that's not where we end our work. We continue to make contact with that individual for 18 months after they exit the program successfully or unsuccessfully. I think by doing that, which is hard, which my team hates me for that, but that allows us to be more successful and to set up the families for that. I have a peer support specialist that tells me all the time. He said, "I'm cleaning my recovery. I'm good to go. I've been clean for five years. You know, the monkey's off my back, but the circus is always in town." And so we understand that still being there, six months later, life happens, COVID happened, you lose your job, things go bad. Still being able to uplift our neighbors is what we do and try to do well. Out of those 25, though, 18 of them were chronically homeless. These were 18 that were living on the street in Haywood County. Seven of them were prevention cases, which means they had an eviction notice in hand, and they were getting ready to become homeless. And we were able to step in, pay their rent, get them back on the right track. So, you know, 18 people is not a lot, when you think about the population of Haywood County, but 18 is a lot when you think about 18 families, you know. And we're sort of proud of that, and some of the work that's being done. And this is federal money that's happening. A little bit more just on the coordination side. I talked to you about NC Serves, and we take calls and walk-ins from all 21 human service needs. This is some of what those numbers look like from last year. We supported around 70 veterans and families. We addressed 190 individual needs, and we had an 83% success rate in doing so. And some of those needs are a little bit far-fetched. You get somebody that has a call and says, "Hey, I want to, I need you to help me pay off my, you know, 2024 truck, because I just lost my job." That's not a big priority for us, but it is a big priority for them. So we do try to help them figure out how we might be able to step in and pay their utility bill, or get them another job, or do other things so they can do that. So we do divert our efforts where they need to be. And you can just sort of see some of the other needs that we're seeing amongst the veterans. Utilities is a big one. Income support, employment's up, and food assistance also has spiked considerably, particularly due to the COVID. Here's our HOPE program I want to talk a little bit about. We are working really close with the police department, the sheriff's department, right now, to use our peer supports. And they're doing intensive and extensive outreach in the community. These are the most vulnerable people in the community. They're not going to the soup kitchens. They're not receiving any kind of benefits. And these peer supports are going out, identifying them and bringing them in. What's cool, the picture that you see there is a picture we took at my church, Allen's Creek Baptist Church, with the sheriff's department, police department, mountain projects. We stretch our dollars. So where some of those bigger, larger grants can't pay for certain things, we go after some of the smaller foundation grants. And so our Haywood Fund stepped in, and we got a small grant from them for these outreach bags that our HOPE team is now going out and using this as a gesture to start building those relationships with that. We do collaborate really closely with NC Care 360, which is a statewide effort. What's unique about this platform, it is a software. It is a web-based platform that the state is using to track the social determinants of health. It just so happens that it started in the veteran space, and it started here in the county with our NC Serves program first. So this is just some of our local partners that we have. We have 500 partners across the state that we work with on a regular basis, and as well as some other federal partners. But you can see here, all these organizations right here aren't exactly veteran-centric, but they are human-centric. And Haywood Regional Community Hospital, we did a great collaboration with them. We have a kiosk in the gym. We're getting ready to put it back in there. It's a no wrong door policy, where they can walk up, say, "I need something," and it goes to our coordination center, and we're tracking that. So Duke Life Point Hospital's been a great partner. Vaya Health has been a phenomenal partner. They're actually the pass-through for some of these programs from the state. So they've been a really strong partner. Your Veterans Service Office, and I was going to talk a little bit about some of the stuff we're doing with the DSS team now. You know, identifying veterans is the thing that we want to do. A lot of people don't understand how many programs are out there, and how much money we have right now, particularly because of the CARES Act, for this population in Haywood County. And so just making ourselves relevant, making ourselves known in the community, that if you did serve, there are programs for you. And the worst thing that you can do is ask, and nothing happened. The best thing that can happen is we get somebody who's chronically homeless, living on the street, housed, back to work, and paying taxes, and being a successful part of the community. And that's really what we aim to do as an organization. So I hope I didn't go over too long. I had a lot to say. I could talk for days on this. I can get into more of the details. Ira, do you want to go? Do you want me to ask questions first? Y'all have any questions for me before I let Ira bring up?
Well, I know, Brandon, you and I are on the Homeless Task Force together. And one thing that, you know, we want to get the word out is that you have money for veterans in housing, and that it's there. It's just, you know, we want them to be aware that you can't help. And I appreciate all the work that you're doing in that.
And I will say, too, that two hotels, a lot of the hotels in the area have done really good. But the Super Six and Best Western has been a phenomenal partner for us. That's a bridge. We had a great article in the paper recently about a veteran who actually made the statement that he never would have went into sustainable or permanent housing if he had not had the opportunity to go to a hotel first. And so we were able to work with the hotels. He spent three weeks at the hotel. We were able to pay for that. But that was a perfect bridge for this individual, to get used to taking a hot shower, to getting used to, you know, having a warm place to put his head. And so that, to me, was eye-opening. That was a bridge. And so we're using that a lot now. That hotel is a bridge. But we don't want them to stay there long. We don't want them to become a crutch. We want to get them back into an apartment, a condo, you know, a trailer, somewhere else that they can live, and they're self-sustainable. And that would be working with your Veterans Service Office for VA Disability, or working through our Employment Program to get them back to work, because that's really what we're looking at.
My dad was a veteran, and I am a little familiar with the restoration house that you have in Asheville, and it's quite a phenomenal program. So it's put a lot of responsibility back to those folks, and it's really successful. So I appreciate that.
Yeah. And it's not a handout. We make them do stuff. Like, you're not going to just sit there and hang out for free. You've got to work. You've got to do stuff. All right, Ira, I'll let you close us up.
Brandon, I got a question for you. How does people get in contact with you guys if they're needing help with something? How's the best way to do that?
So all the providers you see there in front of you on the screen have access to be able to send us a referral through the platform, which is what we do with those partners. But anybody else can reach us. There's no wrong door. You call us on our 855 number, Facebook us, Instagram us, Twitch chat us, I don't know, all that stuff. There's no wrong door. You can walk into 24 Cumberland, where office is in Asheville. You can walk into the service office here. They know how to get ahold of us. They can send those referrals. Walk into DSS, we're working on. The more people that know, that's how we want people to get to us. And so they can call us, they can email us, they can visit our website. There's no wrong-door approach. And we have case managers in Haywood County that work remote. So we have a team here that's in Haywood County all the time, on the streets, working with the citizens here. So it's not just Asheville. They actually live here, they work here, they're in the community.
Thank you.
Good morning. And that's really the point I wanted to emphasize as well, that there's really no wrong door, and that our veterans have done a great job serving the country, and there are a lot of services for them. What they have, the Veterans Services of Carolina has built up over the last several years through grant funding, a tremendous battery of services. And we also have all of the services that would be available to veterans, and also to our other citizens. And there's a whole lot of the partners up here. We can work, and we'll be working very closely with the Veterans Services of Carolinas to make sure that anybody who needs service gets the service. So if you have anybody, if you can get ahold directly there, if you can go through our Veterans Office, or as Director Wilson there was saying, we're happy to help coordinate and get people there. We serve over a quarter of the county. So that's really just what I wanted to emphasize is the partnership that we do have, and the services that we do have for our community.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next order of business is our, is a discussion or adjustment to the agenda, and I do not have anything. Does anyone else have any?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, our next order of business is our consent agenda. And there are five items in the consent agenda. Does any of the Commissioners have any questions on any of the consent agenda items? Okay, can, so, uh, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other, any discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so you want to pause? Okay, then we'll move on to our regular agenda, we have none. And so, um, we'll move on to appointments, and we have our County Manager, Brighton Moorehead, here to present those two appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the first is to, uh, reappoint Mr. Carl Jackson to the Clyde Zoning Board. We have an email from, uh, Joy Garland, Town Administrator, uh, saying that the, um, the Clyde Board of Alderman requests the reappointment, and that, uh, if he wasn't on the board, it would be detrimental to the functions of Clyde Zoning Board.
Okay. All right, can I, I'll entertain a motion, we approve, uh, Carl Jackson to the Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
Your second.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The next one is a reappointment of Michael Conacki to the Recreation Board, and an appointment of Judy Sutton to the Recreation Board. We have an email, I think it's in your packet, from, uh, Kevin Fitzgerald, the, uh, Rec Board Chair, uh, who, um, says he brings a unique perspective with his breadth and depth of experience of traditional recreational activities. He's been the, um, a vital part of that board for several terms. And then, uh, Ms. Sutton, uh, is affiliated with, uh, Catalucci Ranch, but she's an avid skier and hiker. She has an interest in, uh, outdoor recreation, and, and I'll, I'll let Mr. Rogers say something if he sits on that board, if there's anything to add.
Uh, nothing to add. I mean, Michael, I've served with him for several years now, does a phenomenal job. He does bring a different perspective to the board, so it's good to have him on the board, and then Ms. Sutton as well, with our focus, our refocus on outdoor recreation. We felt like she'd be a good fit for that, with, with her experience, so both of them, both of those come highly recommended.